All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good morning, welcome to the November 9th, 2020 Planning, Pennington County Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on November 17th at 10:30 AM. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. I would also note that there are agendas in the back bookshelf for the meeting. And with that, because Jim is on Zoom, we will have a roll call vote for all of the items, and we'll go ahead and start with the roll call. I am here.
Charlie.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Mark.
Travis.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda this morning is approval of the October 26th, 2020 minutes. Is there any corrections or changes?
I can't comment.
Go ahead.
I wasn't here, nor was Kathy, but it indicated seven people approved in a couple of different cases, and I don't think there were seven people here.
I noted that for all of the consent items.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, all of the consent items had seven to zero, and they should be four to zero. That's the correction.
Okay, thank you. I can't comment on the rest of it, but...
No, good catch. Anything else from anyone? Hearing nothing, seeing nothing. I would entertain a motion for approval of the October 26th minutes noting the change from seven to zero to four to zero on the consent items.
So moved.
Take it.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda on the consent calendar consists of items three, four, and five. Regular items on the agenda includes items six through 16, followed by our standard items at the end of the agenda. Are there any changes or considerations to the agenda today? Anybody in the audience? Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
So moved.
A second.
Motion second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to today's consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, Staff member, or Audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1530, for Peaceville Valley Hideaway LLC, William &amp; Valerie Landis, to review a multifamily dwelling in a low-density residential district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit CU 1530 with conditions. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1639, for Troxel Properties LLC, Pam Troxel is the agent, to review a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit CU 1639 with conditions. And finally, item five is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1929, for Chad and Nancy Reber, Reber Sanitation, to review a contractor's equipment storage yard in a limited agriculture district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit CU 1929 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
No, there's not.
Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the consent agenda? For those folks in the audience, items three, four, and five will all be voted on at the same time. Are there any of those items that anyone in the audience wishes to pull from the agenda? Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of today's consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion? No further discussion from anybody in the audience, no further comments, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item six.
Good morning, Chris Sack, Environmental Planner. Item six is Mining Permit Registration, MP 20-06. It's to register an existing mining operation in accordance with Sections 205 and 320 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance. The applicant is Kroll Inc. The size of the property is involved are eighty-two, eight, one hundred and forty-two point seven acres. The existing land use is mining, however, on one of the properties, there is a single family residence with some barns and some farm utility structures. The zoning is general ag. The applicant Kroll has requested to register their existing Farmingdale pit. There is special floodplain hazard on the property. Section 320 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance, P number two, requires that the registration of all legal non-conforming mining operations, these are mining operations without an approved mining or construction permit, that were in operation prior to the zoning ordinance requiring a permit for mines. They've been operating the pit since 2005. They do have a South Dakota Mine License, which is number 96-604, and it was approved on May 30th of 2005. Mining activity includes excavation, hauling, crushing, and/or washing aggregates and stockpiling. No blasting does occur on this site. Erosion and sediment control measures are and will continue to be in place to control dust and sediment from leaving the site. The site will be reclaimed with vegetation when the operation has ceased. Cubic yards excavated to date are one hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-three, and the applicant anticipates eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-three cubic yards to be excavated per year. The main haul road is East Highway 44. According to the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, twenty-five acres have been mined and eleven point five zero have been reclaimed. It appears to staff that that is meeting section through 28 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance, which is attached in the back on the following page. The Pennington County Planning Department has concluded that the permit limit for the Farmingdale pit be no more than approximately three hundred and forty-four acres on the subject property south of East Highway 44, and therefore, staff recommends approval of mining permit registration, MP 20-06.
Hello.
With conditions.
Yeah, good morning.
Thank you. Jim, can you... Yeah, now, he's on mute.
I think he muted.
He's on the phone. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Okay, my question is, the site is eight hundred and forty-two point seven acres, and to be clear, the, this permit will only be for three hundred and forty-four of those eight forty-two.
Correct. They submitted a document, which unfortunately, I forgot to put into the presentation, that their future disturbed area cuts off part of the property, and they labeled that as future disturbance and nothing else on the property, and when staff calculated it out as three hundred and forty-four acres, approximately.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions from the audience on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion on item six.
So moved.
Second.
Is that approval?
Move for approval, sorry.
Thank you. And second for approval?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item seven.
Item seven is Mining Permit Registration, MP-2007. It's to register an existing mining operation in accordance with Sections 205 and 320 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance. The applicant is Pennington, Pennington County Highway Department. The land is owned by the Forest Service. The size of the properties involved is one thousand two hundred and eighty acres. The existing land use is mining operation. So, the Pennington Highway, Pennington County Highway Department has requested to register their existing Nichols Creek Quarry to establish the legal non-conforming status of the mine. There is no structures on the property, the site is vacant. Again, Section 320P of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance requires that all legal non-conforming mining operations register, mining operations without an approved mining or construction permit. The Pennington County Highway Department has been operating the Nichols Creek Quarry since 1999 under the South Dakota Mine License number 83-45, which covers the entire property. Mining activities include excavation, hauling, crushing, and/or washing aggregates. There is a staff error, it does say no blasting, look her at the site, but if you look on the page that's attached for Section 328, they do indicate that they do, that they do blast at the site. Erosion, erosion control measures are and will continue to be in place. The site will be reclaimed with vegetation when the operation has ceased. Cubic yards excavated to date is eighty thousand nine hundred and twelve, and the applicant anticipates twenty thousand cubic yards periodically to be excavated per year. The haul roads are South Castle Creek Road and Deerfield Road. According to the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, two point five acres have been mined. It appears to staff that the applicant is meeting Section 328 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance. The Pennington County Planning Department has concluded that the permit limit of Nichols Creek Quarry be five acres, more or less, as determined by the United States Forest Service on the properties described as all of Section 28 and all of Section 27 of T1N Range 2. Staff is recommending approval of mining permit registration, 20-07, with the following conditions. I do believe that you guys received an email from a concerned citizen on the site. The thing to consider with these is this is not an actual mining permit, this doesn't issue use, this just confirms their boundary, which is the five acres that the Forest Service gives them.
Thank you. Is that all?
Yes.
Any questions for staff on this item?
Yes.
Kathy?
You know, I appreciate you pointing out that this is not an actual mine permit, just establishes the boundaries, but these mines that have been in existence for a long time, what is the process then for them to receive a mine permit to continue mining?
So, under, under Section 320, any existing pit or quarry prior to the issuance of 320 doesn't require to get a permit, they have to register to figure out their property boundaries. If they say they want to expand past this five acres, or on the last one, Kroll wants to go past the three hundred and forty-four acres, they'll have to come in and get a new, a mining permit under Section 320. All mining operations under 320 are required to meet that Section 328, but other than that, a permit's not needed unless they go outside of what we are establishing as their legal non-conforming use today.
Which is the five acres.
Which is the five acres, correct. More or less, I don't know what that means, the Forest, that's the Forest Service language that they put in their agreement with the Highway Department, so I'm not sure what that more or less is.
So, so I'm a little, just to make sure I'm clear, so the acreage of these two parcels is much larger, but they're only, this, this boundary is just really for that five acre footprint?
Correct. So if they want to say, go to ten acres, and they get the approval from the Forest Service, they'll have to come in and get the mining permit under 320, and go through the whole notice requirements, the whole hearing in front of the Planning Commission, everything.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I've got just a couple of simple ones. One, it seems like these are operations that are perceived, for lack of a better term, like they were grandfathered because they're older?
Correct. They're, and that's what we're trying to figure out, is what, what size and what, what they're allowed to do under that legal non-conforming status.
Are we going to have more of these then coming down because you're cleaning that up?
Yes, so we sent out, I believe, roughly fifteen, and we have a total of, or, sorry, take that back, we sent out about twenty letters to different mining companies who have mines. Only about fifteen of them responded. That would be Kroll, which is what you heard, Highway, and then the only one other than Highway now would be Pete Lean, which will be coming at later meeting dates.
My last one's even, probably the only one that's close to being a mirror, but you, in this particular one, there is an indication under Analysis, Page two or three, it says no blasting, and then we follow through to the, which I assume these are a set of notes that are incorporated into this file. It's the Nichols Creek pit, and it goes one through eight, but there it says, number five, there is blasting at this site. And what I was getting is, when we do those things, and they seem in conflict to help our citizens, somehow we ought to explain a little further which way we're going, or how this is to be addressed.
Correct. And I think what happened with this one is this one was done after preview, you'll see that there's two more highway ones where they don't do blasting.
Correct.
And it was just, it was brought over and put in there, and it wasn't changed, there was a staff error on my part that it wasn't in there. But they do indicate that there is.
You probably told that, and I was busy reading.
To clarify for the record, they will be blasting at this site.
Correct. Which blasting is allowed under 320, as long as they meet the requirements. I don't have those specifically in front of me for blasting, but there's a set of different requirements I have to meet with, vibrations and different stuff like that, which they indicate they do require their contractors to meet all, all requirements.
So, when the contractor, and this is the Highway, Pennington County Highway Department, when the contractor that the Pennington County Highway Department hires to do this will provide the peak velocity, ground vibration, et cetera, et cetera, that's required during the blasting operations in 320?
Correct. And they're, they're required to keep a log, so anytime the Planning Department requests that information, that they can provide it to us, usually we would request that every year when we require their annual mining report.
Okay. So, if that information, it looks like that information, it wasn't in the packet, and this concerned citizen from Vermillion wrote, and that was one of her conclusions, can this information on the past that has been done there be provided to her? So, she has it?
Yes, and I'm not sure what packet she was provided. It's in this one, so it was attached to the staff report, so I'm not sure what, what she got. I wasn't the one who sent it to her, and I'm not sure who, who did.
All of the previous mine blasting information was included?
Oh, no, not the, not the mine blast information that I'd have to get from, from County Highway. That information wasn't specifically requested, the log, because like I said earlier, all we're trying to do is establish the, what size.
Yeah, it's, it's drawing the line in the sand for the items that are grandfathered in for the future, saying that you have a five acre mine, if you want to go bigger than five acre, we gotta establish a mining permit in the future, otherwise, you need to stay within your predetermined boundary. But she was, the request in this email that we got this morning says, based on the fact that we have not been provided the attachment and question again, we ask that you would either table or deny the permit at this time. And me personally, I'm not interested in tabling or denying it, but I, if she wants access to the blasting information, I think we should provide that to her.
Yep, I'm sure we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, just following on Rich's thoughts, is it, have, has there, have you been in discussion with her to explain that, like, one, the confusion about the blasting was a typo and, and, you know, some of her other concerns? I mean, has there been communication with the party?
So, I didn't get that email until this morning, so I hadn't. I had talked to her on Friday and tried to explain to her that this wasn't about a use or anything like that, we were just debating the, or figuring out the lines. I did not get this until I got in this morning, so she was not informed of this yet. I can definitely, it's what I sent her the logs, explain to her what's, what was going on with that.
Then I have one more. They refer to contractor in here, and of course, the, the Pennington County's a governmental entity. I assume contractor means that, let's say, Pennington County wants to get fifteen thousand yards of particular road base material, that they put it out for bid, they allow the contractor to come into this quarry and use the mining permit to produce those for them. Is that what they're referring to? And then I do have a follow-up on that, too.
Um, that could be. I think contractor in this stance means the contractor and the company that they hire to do the blasting. A lot of operations hire, can hire out. I'm not sure on exactly highways, how they operate that. I think Joe's in the audience, if he...
I think it goes farther than that, because contractors referred to a number of places that don't involve blasting.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. Can you?
Good morning, Planning Commission. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. Yeah, the contractor, we, we don't actually crush gravel ourselves, we have that crushed. Numerous contractors in the state region, I guess, go in there and crush that. I don't recall who crushed this last. There's Rogers Construction crushed for us, that benchmark. Those are what we're referring to in the, I'm not real familiar with the 320, I guess, but that's who we have crush gravel, is numerous different contractors, so.
Okay, and then my follow-up question, does that mean then, in theory, you have to go out there and make sure that they were operating correctly under what you've had as the mining permit?
Absolutely, yeah, that, that mining, we, we do all the SWIP, we do all, you know, we make sure they're in compliance with MSHA and, and all of that, correct. That's all, that all falls on us since we hold the permit, so. We have our engineering techs go out there and check on them.
That's what I thought. In other words, those are the ones that you're putting out for bid when I see you requesting fifty thousand yards of number two base, something like that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman? Could I follow up?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Mr. Miller?
Joe. Come on back.
I just, if I may, just a follow-up. So, what is, in your planning horizon, when do you believe that you will, you know, achieve the five acre limit? When do you think you'll expand this mine to the five acre?
Honestly, I'm not real sure. Mark, did you happen to get a gravel due sheet? I'm not, most of the gravel that comes out of Nichols Creek actually goes to South Rochford Road. With the South Rochford Road, hopefully going to be paved within the next year or two. We may not have much use for the gravel that comes out of Nichols Creek, we won't know that for, you know, a couple, two, three years before, till we get a good grasp on what our needs are in the area. We do have another pit close by, Copper Mountain, that we also have gravel stockpile at, so we're unsure, we want to keep the mining license until we figure that out.
Yeah, I see, okay, thank you.
Further questions? For staff? Okay. Opening up to the audience, is there any folks in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Jim, do you have anything to add?
No, no.
Okay. Seeing no further comments on this item, the Commission will vote. Hearing none, seeing none. Oh, I don't think that there's been a motion yet. I'm sorry. Is there a motion on item seven?
Well, I'll move approval, but I would just like to say that I, I'm, I'm doing this because I, I guess I have confidence to follow up with the concerned party here and, you know, and address the concerns that she's raised.
Yep, absolutely. Take it.
Motion and second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none on the board, anybody in the audience? Need last comment before we vote on this item? Okay, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item eight.
Item eight is Mining Permit Registration, MP 20-08. It is to register an existing miner in operation in accordance with Sections 205 and 320 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance. The applicant is Pennington County Highway Department, the landowner is James Tolty. The size of the properties involved add to five hundred and fifty-six point one four acres. The existing land use is mining, however, there is a single family residence on the property along with some tool sheds and some farm buildings. The properties are both owned general agriculture, and there's no special flood hazard area on the properties. The Highway Department has requested to register existing Tolty pit to establish the non-conforming status. Again, Section 320P requires that all Pennington County mining op, all mining operations register their legal non-conforming status, mining operations without approved mining or construction permit. Pennington County Highway Department has been operating the Tolty pit since 2011 under mining license 83-45, which covers the entire property. Mining activity includes excavation, hauling, crushing, or washing aggregates and stockpiling. There is no blasting at this site. Erosion control measures will continue to be in place and are in place. The site will be reclaimed with vegetation when the operation of the property is complete. Cubic yards excavated to date are thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-six. The applicant anticipates thirty thousand cubic yards will periodically be excavated per year. Haul roads are Sage Creek Road and East Highway 44. According to the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, eight point two five acres have been mined. It appears to staff that the applicant is meeting Sections 328 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance, and the Penning, the Pennington County Planning Department has concluded that the permit limit of the Tolty pit be five hundred and fifty-six point one four acres, with no more than forty acres of disturbed area at one time on the properties. Staff is recommending approval of mining permit registration, MP 20-08, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item?
I have one.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Where did the forty acres come from? How did, how was that determined, the forty acres of disturbance?
So, Pennington County Highway with, since this is a privately-owned property, they have their agreement, land agreement, their mining agreement with them, and in that, it specifically states that no more than forty acres be disturbed at one time.
Okay, so that, that the agreement, the forty acres is from the agreement between the, the Pennington County, the transportation?
The Highway Department.
And the landowner.
And James Tolty, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Further questions for staff? Okay, I do have a speaker request form on item number eight. Mr., I think it's Elliot Bloom, is that correct? Please state your name for the record once you get to the podium, thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. My name is Elliot Bloom, I'm an attorney here in Rapid at the law firm of Beardsley, Jensen &amp; Lee. I've been retained by a neighbor of this pit, Matthew Bowen, and I also represent a lot of the area farmers and ranchers to this pit. The biggest thing with this mining operation is the material that's coming out of it. Whether it be the gravel or the binder that some people will call it, this clay binder. These roads, especially Sage Creek Road, is a farm-to-market road. All these ranchers, all these farmers are taking Sage Creek Road from the scenic area to Wal. My clients in the, in the Highway Department have indicated to me that the gravel and the material that's coming out of this mine meet the standard specifications. However, when you look at the reality of the situation, when this material's getting applied to the roads, any moisture, whether it be a quarter inch of rain, a half an inch of rain, the, the roads become impassable. There have been multiple people stuck. My father, who lives in the area as well, had to unhit, unhook a horse trailer because he couldn't get to a bull sale. Matt Bowen, my client, had two million dollars' worth of, of seed on contract in Wal, and there was a period of time where he couldn't get out of his place. And as a lot of you know, their interest builds on that when you can't fulfill those contracts. The mail delivery service for that period of about two months couldn't access any of the properties. There was also concerns of ambulance services, fire department, as well as the, the mail not being delivered. My client also wasn't able to get the, the necessary farm implement mechanics out to his property, whether it be Grossenburg's RDO, or Dale's Tire, to fix any tires with the material that's coming out of this. A good example, when I go home and, and go on the family farm, the, the county put one load on top of a hill coming out of Spring Creek, thinking that it needed, needed some gravel. thinking that it needed, uh, needed some gravel on there. Well, if any moisture, any type of rain is, uh, happens, you can't get up that road. You have to go all the way around to scenic. Uh, another big concern here is a lot of this Sage Creek Road is, I'd say 99% tourist traffic coming out of the park, um, and coming into scenic down on Highway 44. There's been multiple instances of people getting stuck. Matt, my client, also had to get pulled out on Sage Creek Road by a county employee, uh, because he couldn't, he got stuck on this road after, uh, putting this material on. Um, it was about a year ago that I called a few people from the county, uh, in regards to this road. They did go out there, scratched the ground a little bit, and it did help some. But with this material, um, this clay binder is not, uh, effective when it comes to, um, helping these farmers and ranchers get their product to town or to even come to Rapid. I, the reason why we object to this permit application is mainly the material that's coming out of it. Uh, the county has access to another pit that's not very far away, uh, being Doug Bizet's pit, better quality gravel, um, and, and from experience from my clients, they've stated that putting that type of gravel on there, um, really does benefit the road. But, but the material coming out of this, this Talty pit, um, is, is not, it's causing more problems. And mainly my reason for being here is just a caution. Um, other than the problems that this material presents, whether it gets stuck on vehicles, we've had mirrors ripped off, fuel lines ripped off. Um, the, the maintenance and upkeep on these farm vehi- vehicles with this material have been just astounding. And with the price of beef and the price of corn now, it's harding, it's even getting even harder to make a living, other than having to deal with this material on the roads. But back to my last point is, we have a lot of tourist traffic. And with the amount of people getting stuck on this road when it rains just a little bit, I am here to caution you that there's going to be an accident. It is so slippery. I've traveled it myself. Um, and if there is an accident, then we worry about ambulance services and 911, uh, or police getting there, fire trucks, everything else. We, my client does have a letter. Uh, he wasn't able to, again, this is harvest season, getting calves home. Um, but we do have a letter from the township opposing this permit application. Um, and we do have a bunch of other, uh, support from the community in opposing this. So I appreciate your time, Commissioners. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm definitely here to answer them.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead.
Um, who did you contact at the county? He said you made, uh, phone calls and reached out to individuals?
I did. There was two individuals, two, uh, two guys, and, and Joe might be able to answer that. But it was about a year ago. Um, and, and they did go out there, they fixed it to the extent that they put additional gravel, better gravel on, and it helped a little bit. Um, because there were people getting stuck, uh, about a year ago. The, the problem still persists. Um, since that time, they have put a load up on Spring Creek. You can't traverse that road at all if, if there's a little moisture. You know, they keep telling us, and, and the county keeps telling us, oh, give it time, give it time. Once it hardens, then you'll, you'll be okay. It's been four or five years, um, in some of these places where we've seen this binder put on, and it still is bad when a little moisture comes on. So, you know, there's only so much time you can give, and I, I, they'll tell me all day long that it meets the specifications, um, but being out there, traveling it is another thing.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Sandy.
My question is, do you have a problem with them mining this product? Or, or what they are doing with it after they mine it? In other words, if it were mined and going someplace else for another use, would you have a problem with the permit?
Yes, Your Honor, or, yes, Commissioner, they, uh, I get too used to saying, I get too used to saying that. We have a problem with all the material coming out of that. It's not so much the, uh, it's the material on the land. Like I said, they've, they're, they're doing the same exact thing or did the same exact thing on a neighboring property. Doug Bizet has a pit, and, and the material that comes out of there is, is plum fine. It works. It's good quality material. However, for some reason, this, this pit is not producing the material, and this binder is causing the problems.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. My question again is, is the problem with being mined, or is the problem with what it's being used for after it's mined?
I gotcha. The, the main problem is what it's being used for.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Mr. Chairman?
You're next, Jim.
Okay, you know, I, I really don't know if, um, we can deny a permit because of the quality of the material. I'm just, I'm just not sure that we can do that. But I do understand what you're saying. And I, I grew up with gumbo roads, so I know very well what you're saying, and it's no fun. And, um, if this material, which, assuming you're correct, I mean, I'm not saying you're not correct on this, but the, the county needs to address this issue. I mean, you need to have passable roads. In this day and age, there's just no reason not to, um, that, that's, I, I, I understand what you're saying. It's a serious issue.
Thank you. Jim, go ahead.
Uh, I, and I, I just was, uh, kind of affirming what Kathy said. It seems to me this is clearly a matter for the county board, not for the, uh, zoning and planning commission. Um, they need to instruct their, uh, highway department to use materials that are more effective. And I sympathize with the people out there who are victims of this poor choice of, of materials. But, uh, I'm with Kathy. We can't really, I don't think, deny a mining, uh, permit to, uh, anyone just because they make poor choices when it comes to selling and distributing their product. So, uh, I think, uh, a few calls to county commissioners would probably solve this problem pretty quickly.
Okay. Any further questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, Cody, could you maybe zoom out, or I guess this is a slide, but, um, I want to try to orient myself with respect to the Sage Creek Road?
Can somebody explain what on earth happens when the water gets on there?
It gets really slimy, I think.
I mean, dissolves or?
No, it swells up. The clays swell, and they just are, they're just like slimy, slippery. It's, when you walk in, you, you know, the mud sticks to your boots, and pretty soon you got a stack of mud. That's what.
I see. Thank you.
It's, it's a, and being this close to the Badlands, it makes perfect sense that there would be some clay in it, but.
Lots of clay.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, uh, I, I have come into the Badlands from the south entrance, I believe. Um, and if that's similar to, to that, that material, then I understand what this, what the, the concern is. I, I, that's why I was trying to understand exactly where the Sage Creek Road went.
I, I can pull up Rapid map if you want.
Yeah, let's do that quick. But then I, I would agree that the course of action is, is certainly with the Pennington County Highway Department. And I don't know if the gentlemen here want to speak to that, or can speak to that, or need to re- review some items. Do you want to come, come up and, and address any of the, the concerns?
Good morning, Commission. Um, yeah, short notice this morning that this was going to be on the agenda. I was actually here for another matter, but, uh, um, in regards to the, the surfacing spec, the South Dakota DOT in 2010, um, recommended going to the surfacing spec, which, which tells you to put some more clay, or more clay than what, uh, a lot of people were used to, um, into your gravel products. What that does is it, you know, in the normal conditions, um, I want you to keep in mind, 2019 was the wettest year on record ever. Um, so we had a lot of issues other places as well. Um, with that being said, was the road slimy? Absolutely. Um, is the material bad? No, it's not. Um, that, uh, the, the, putting clay on the roads, you get a good road about 95% of the time with adequate moisture, and, and to make sure the, the road is properly constructed with the, the right amount of crown. Um, we did fight it in 2019 when we were finished graveling it, uh, Sage Creek Road, that is. Um, with that being said, most all the counties, um, I know Pennington County's been using it for 10 years. I know Lawrence County uses the same spec. Um, there's a lot of, uh, other counties that use the same South Dakota DOT specification. Um, and while it does get a little slimy on the top, you know, when it does rain a little bit, um, it, the, the good days, like I said, outweigh the bad. Um, you get a relatively dust-free road when it's dry. Um, whereas with a, a limestone gravel, like up in the Black Hills, doesn't matter almost how much clay you put in it, you still get a very dusty road, so. Um, with that being said, I guess that's the highways department's stance on it. Um, and just kind of a little explanation of, of what, where we went with it. Um, most every road in this area has seen it. I think there's probably five or six roads that haven't seen it, um, that are yet to be gravled, and that's just due to the fact that we are behind on getting our roads gravled, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Quick question for Joe. What about, uh, cars and vehicles getting stuck in that kind of road? I'm, I just, just want to know, what's the, is 2019 like an odd year where we actually had a lot of vehicles stuck on that road? And I might even ask, uh, Elliot Bloom if he has any information on that as well? Or is this like a constant thing on that, in that particular area?
I haven't heard of any of it yet this year. Um, I have not received one phone call of people getting stuck on Sage Creek. Um, it was just the 2019 year, to my knowledge, and, and mind you, I've only been here two years. Maybe Mark Shaw could speak to that, but, uh, 2019, we were laying that gravel down, so we didn't get that top sealed right away before we got more moisture. So, um, that's kind of the battle we were fighting in 2019 with all the moisture. We were trying to get that road finished, um, with the, with the abundance of moisture without sealing that top, um, that clay soaks that water up, and it be, does become like mud. But if you, if you work it like concrete, it seals that top, and then the water runs off of it, so. Um, 2019 was an odd year. It was the wettest year on record. Like I said, I haven't had any calls this year on any cars getting stuck. Mark?
Can I ask one more question, Joe, of you?
Yes.
Um, as I understood it from what you were saying, then our binder spec, or what we're using as a binder spec, it evolves from other specs that are issued?
Correct. The South Dakota DOT, uh, we, we actually use their specification out of their spec, spec book.
We go by that. We don't mix a cocktail of our own and other?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Uh, Mark Shaw, Pennington County Highway. Um, as Joe said, uh, in 2019, that was a record moisture year. Unfortunately, uh, that was the year we put, uh, this most recent Talty gravel on Sage Creek Road. And we did that, uh, mostly during the winter that year. We started in the fall and went through a winter operations. We had a pretty open winter. Unfortunately, uh, the spring of 2019, as the frost came out of the ground, um, we had two heavy, wet spring snows on top, that landed on top of that gravel. So, uh, what happened is it exceeded the liquid limit of that gravel. And, uh, once you do that, yes, it does turn to a, a soup or mud. It didn't have time to, to, uh, what we'd like call, to call iron out at the time. And, uh, we did have problems in 2019. We, uh, we ended up windrolling that gravel to the side and, uh, relaying it, uh, twice in some spots. Uh, we did ask to have a meeting with the township in that area at, uh, before this happened. We asked to attend one of their meetings and discuss the need to work with us to stick, keep the heavy traffic off of the gravel until it had a chance to do that ironing, make that ironing out, period. And, um, unfortunately, that didn't happen, and, and there were, uh, quite a few heavy loads that were, were hauled on it, and then we got those wet snows. So it was, it was, uh, it's not, in my opinion, or our opinion, a matter of gravel quality. It was, uh, more timing of the year when, uh, it was laid down, or the moisture, uh, that happened that time of year. Since then, um, as Joe said, that once it dries out and irons out, uh, it gets very hard. It gets as hard as this, this countertop, uh, with very little dust, and, um, it sheds water. And it, we, it takes much less, uh, maintenance with the, uh, motor grader because we get less washboarding. So we are following DOT specifications, as, as Joe said, on, and, uh, the average PI, um, in that last gravel mix was 7.1 out of, uh, 19 tests here. And, uh, the, the DOT specification for surfacing gravel is between, uh, 4 and 15. So we were well within that, that surfacing spec. But all the experts, uh, the local government assistance program, uh, that works with us in South Dakota and all across South Dakota is recommending a higher PI or a surfacing spec, I should say. And as Joe said, um, many of the counties are following that recommendation. And actually, some of them are surp- surpassing that by far. Uh, Custer County goes way above the 15 PI, um, on their gravel specifications. We're, we're working to get better quality gravel, but you, we do have some trying times and, and, uh, some issues during that ironing out period. But once we get there, uh, you can lay low, lay down rubber tire marks on, on that gravel, just like you could an asphalt after, after it dried out and settles down. But again, in my opinion, it's not gravel quality at this location. It, it was a matter of timing, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions for staff?
Any more? Uh, do you folks at this time have any immediate projects that are being planned out for materials out of this particular permit?
I believe we've got, uh, another 35,000 tons that is put up there. Um, will probably be, I, I don't know when we'll get those hauled onto. Um, I believe there's several roads down there by scenic that are, are due for gravel. Um, so we're currently, you know, we're crushing up north of Wal as well, as you probably are aware. Um, we're, we're crushing in several places in, in the county this year. Um, and we plan to haul hopefully a lot of gravel in the next couple of years, so. That, I, I can't say when the, the rest of that Talty pit is, is going to come out of there. I, I, I don't know.
You don't have anything immediately other than the materials that are currently there, in other words?
Right, the material is sitting there for our use. Uh, they may, you know, as, um, Elliot, uh, alluded to, um, spot gravelling, you know, if we need, if we get washing, you know, if we get a record moisture like 19, and we've got a lot of washing going on on roads, Mother Nature destroying those, those roads, um, then we'll probably have to get up, get some gravel out of that pit. But if you guys can foresee that, I'll, I'll sure take that advice.
Thank you. Further questions? Okay, go ahead.
Colin McNeese with the State's Attorney's Office. I just want to get everybody back on track. Uh, the question is whether this legal non-conforming mine has to register? And if those three criteria are met, then it must register. The efficacy of the product that's mined is not before this board. All that is before this board is whether it must register. So if the three conditions are met. Thanks.
Thank you. I did receive a letter from, uh, the township, um, here just immediately, and, and, uh, it summarizes essentially what was said, so I don't know if we want to make a copy of that or if it's, uh, relevant for this specific item. Um, it, I believe it has more to do with applying the material to the road as opposed to the mining of the permit. Is that correct, Mr. Bloom? Okay, thank you. Further questions on item eight? Further comments from anybody in the audience on item eight? You have a comment, sir? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Frank Bloom. I live down there, and-
I live down there, and, and Elliot is my son. I, I travel that road every day. Thank you for having us this morning and hearing, hearing us. I travel that road every day. They did put one load of that material on Spring Draw Road, and it is at the top of the hill. And when it snowed a week ago, we got 10 inches of snow. You absolutely could not go through that draw. We had to go around by scenic. Now, I understand, there's, there's two different elements here. You guys are saying it, it's not the material, or it's not the mining problem, but it is the material that they're putting on it. And I just wanted to state this on record, that whatever material that's coming out of this permit, they can't put it on these roads because we can't, here's another aspect. The, the mail service did not go for over a week. Linda Beers gets her medicine through the mail. When she can't get her medicine through the mail, that is going to cause a problem because of the road. It's non-bypassable. The Bigfoot Road had some of this same material put on six years ago. Them two families that are on this Bigfoot Road still cannot use that road when they get a half inch of rain. It is impassable, and I wished I could have had them folks here today to testify against this material. Now, I realize we're barking up the wrong tree. We need to go to the county commissioners. I realize that. But I want on record that you folks know that this material, it's been a new spec in the DOT. It's not an old spec. It is a brand-new spec, and that is our problem. So thank you for your time.
Questions? Okay. Further comments on item eight? Hearing none, seeing none, is there a motion?
I, I saw a move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Anyone in the audience? No more comments on this item, we're going to vote. Roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item nine.
Okay, item nine is mining permit registration MP 20-09. It's to register an existing mining operation in accordance with Section 205 and 320 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The applicant is Pennington County Highway Department. The landowner is Craig and Robin Robertson. The size of the two properties involved add up to 636.2 acres. The existing land use is mining, however, there is a single-family residence with some farm buildings and structures on the property. There is special floodplain hazard on the property, however, the mining operation does not encroach in that floodplain. The Pennington County Highway Department has requested to register their existing mining, or their existing Robertson pit to establish a legal non-conforming status. They've been operating the pit since 1989 under the Mine License 83-45, which covers the entire property. Mining activity includes excavation, hauling, crushing, and washing aggregates and stockpiling. There is no blasting at this site. Erosion control measures are and will continue to be in place. The site will be reclaimed with vegetation. The cubic yards excavated to date is 467,267 cubic yards. And the applicant anticipates 30,000 cubic yards will be periodically excavated per year. According to the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, 21 acres have been mined. It appears the staff at the applicant's meeting, Section 320 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance, the Pennington County Planning Department has concluded that the permit limit of the Robertson pit be 636.2 acres with no more than 40 acres disturbed areas at one time on the properties. Staff is recommending approval of mining, mining permit registration MP 20-09 with the, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item? None from the board? Any questions from anyone in the audience on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, is there a motion on this item?
Move approval.
Move approval.
Second.
I think Kathy beat Jim out on that. So motion and second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item 10.
Good morning, Stephanie Jansen, Planner One. Item 10 is Layout Plan LPL 2033 for David and Luann Hints to combine lots and create Lot 1R Block 11 of the ranch at Black Gap subdivision. The applicants are combining the lots to increase their lot size. Existing Lot 1 is .5 acres and vacant, and existing Lot 2 is .63 acres and contains a single-family residence. There is no special flood hazard area. Proposed Lot 1R would have 1.13 acres zoned planned unit development and contain a single-family residence. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. Staff does recommend approval of Layout Plan LPL 2033 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Are there any questions from anybody in the audience on this item? I don't have any speaker request forms. Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of Layout Plan LPL 20-33 with seven conditions. Move approval?
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none? Roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item 11.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jason Vinison County Planner. Agenda item 11 is Minor Platte 20-34. The applicant's and landowner are David and Carrie Kelting. The agent is Fisk Land Surveying. The site location is 23626 Tigreville Road. The applicant's agent has requested Minor Platte 20-34 in order to subdivide one lot and create lots 4A and 4B of Lot 4 of Track 3 of Tigreville subdivision. As it sits today, the property is low-density residential district. It consists of 6.52 actual acres. Access is off Tigreville Road. No special flood hazard area on the property. It contains a double-wide mobile home, a detached garage, five outbuildings. An outhouse that has been filled in is non-functional, as well as a county septic operating permit. And proposed lots are on the screen for you to review, starting with Lot 4A in green. Will continue to be low-density residential district, 3.5 acres. Access will continue to be off of Tigreville Road. Will contain the double-wide mobile home, the detached garage, five outbuildings, and a non-functional outhouse. Lot 4B in red will continue to be low-density residential district, 3.02 acres, and will be vacant of any structures. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review with no comments received. With that, September of this year, the Board of Commissioners approved Layout Plan 20-22 with conditions. The Board of Adjustment on that same day also approved subdivision regulations variance to waive construction, road construction plans and road improvements in Tigreville Road, as well as to waive percolation, percolation tests and soil profile whole information. Then again, September 30th of this month, of last month of this year, sorry, the applicant's agent requested Minor Platte 20-34 to subdivide this lot. The proposed lots do not appear to reduce the size of the existing lot below minimum size requirements for low-density residential districts. The applicant has resolved, has submitted building permits for outbuildings and filled in the outhouse in order to resolve a county ordinance violation on the property. And with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with the existing lots and current land uses in the area. And staff recommends approval of Minor Platte MPL 20-34 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, seeing none from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none? With that, staff recommends approval of Minor Platte LPL 20-34 with seven conditions. Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none on the board? No one in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Before we go to item 12, Jerry, can you remind me again who's, who are the other folks on the call? I want to make sure I'm keeping the people that are on the, on the call involved in the meeting.
We'd have to confirm with Joan. I think one of the people was Jessica Hessler.
Are they still on? So we did not hear from them, then? Okay. We will, we didn't hear anything during request for comment? Okay. All right, we will go to item 12 and follow up on those at the end. Go ahead.
Right, Agenda item 12 is Conditional Use Permit Review 16-18 to review the transfer of vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. The applicants and local contacts are Richard and Susan Reposa. As the property's, I'm sorry. Plant Commission has seen this before. It was originally approved in August of 2016, reviewed again in August 2017, and most recently, August of 2020. As it sits today, the property is zoned low-density residential district consisting of 3.52 acres. Access is taken off Pine Haven Drive. There is no special flood hazard area on the property, and it contains a single-family residence, a detached garage, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. October 7th of this year, the previous owner, Stephen Kathy Vanager, notified staff that they would be transferring Conditional Use Permit 16-18 to Richard and Susan Reposa. October 13th, the applicants, the Reposas submitted all required documentation per Pennington County zoning ordinance, Section 319. October 30th of this year, staff confirmed that all other conditions appeared to be met. And at the time of this report, staff has not received any complaints regarding the subject property, and therefore recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 16-18 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item? Seeing none on the board, Jim, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. Any questions from anyone in the audience on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit CU 16-18 with 16 conditions. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, is there further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none by the board or the audience, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item 13.
Stephanie Jansen, Planner One. Item 13 is Conditional Use Permit CU 2025 for Jessica Hessler of Seven Wonders LLC, and Fisk Land Surveying as the agent to allow a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. The subject property is 1.5 acres, access is off of Norris Peak Road. There is a 500-year floodplain on the property. The lot contains a single-family residence built in 1960 per DOE records and a re-roof in 2014. After routing this Conditional Use Permit, staff received comments from the highway department stating the following. The highway department has concerns about allowing this to become a commercial rental property and is not in favor of approving this permit. The structure is located in a dangerous location. It is downhill of oncoming traffic and located in the outside of the curve, leaving little to no recovery area if vehicles were to leave the roadway. The existing parking area does not appear large enough to ensure vehicles with or without attached trailers can be safely parked outside of the right-of-way. Vehicles located in the parking area also become crash hazards to any vehicle that would leave the roadway. There is a front porch that is not shown in the included survey that may be encroaching in the right-of-way. Staff has noted county highways' concerns. On November 3rd, 2020, staff performed a site visit to the subject property and found that the cabin did not have a front porch encroaching the right-of-way. The subject home has been there since 1960 and recently used as a vacation home rental and single-family residence for years. The speed limit is 25 miles per hour on Norris Peak Road. The cabin only has one bedroom with the maximal overnight occupancy being two people. The applicant Jessica Hessler advises her renters to pull through and park, which allows parking from the start of the parking area to the end of the property line to the north. She also does not allow renters to bring a trailer to ensure there are no problems with parking on the road. With the home existing for so many years, the size of the home being one bedroom, and the applicant taking measures to improve safety, staff doesn't see any concerns. I have attached some emails to the packet, and then you also received an email for the comments prior to submitting this report. The zoning ordinance lists seven factors that the Plant Commission may consider in their review of Conditional Use Permit applications. I have seven criteria on the slide, and will be reading the answers to each. Criteria one, vacation home rentals are used similarly to single-family residences and should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general well, welfare of the public. Criteria two, this Conditional Use Permit should not change the residential use of the property and thus should not have, should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Criteria three, allowing this Conditional Use Permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, the subject property is served by a private onsite wastewater treatment system. Access to the property will be provided via an approach off of Norris Peak Road. Criteria five, access to the property will be provided after approach off of Norris Peak Road. Vacation home rentals are used similarly to single-family residents and should not generate significant amounts of traffic to the property. Criteria six, the current zoning is suburban residential district. Vacation home rentals are allowed in this district with a Conditional Use Permit. The future land use of the subject property is commercial. This use would be grandfathered if approved. Staff does recommend approval of Conditional Use Permit CU 2025 with conditions. Fisk Land Surveying is in, in attendance in case you have any questions. And I believe Jessica Hessler is on the phone.
Thank you for noting that for me. Are there any questions for staff on this item? One question, seeing none from the rest of the board is that, so they have a, is there an open violation for operating the VHR without an approved CUP?
Correct.
And when will that be resolved?
If this gets approved, it would be resolved, and they could close out the case.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, how long has it been operating as VHR in violation?
I would have to check. It is a newer violation, but I'd have to see how long it had been operating.
Ms. Chairman?
Any further, Kathy?
Just a continuation. Does the violation, is it, I mean, the ownership changed within, I think it was late in 2017. So is this violation post or pre 2007, that, that transfer of ownership?
Post.
Okay. But it operated as a vacation home rental prior to that as well?
I don't know prior, recently, they operated as a vacation home rental, but I was saying that it existed as a single-family residence prior.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jim.
Just a comment. When I lived out on Nemo Road for those 25 years, I, I do recall one day finding myself on a rather slippery road, sliding towards that particular structure, since I did drive that road quite often. I ended up, I didn't hit the building, of course, there were no ill consequences. I did get better tires, but I, I think this is a, a sort of ghastly example of a building that was built in 1960 when maybe we were less attentive. And I, my suspicion is there's not much we can do in terms of changing the, the placement of the structure, of course, but I do question whether we ought to be having people who are guests coming in and being perhaps less knowledgeable about the potential hazard that, that we want to, you know, endorse that kind of use. It's one thing if somebody owns the place and they choose to live under those circumstances, but it just seems sort of odd to be somehow, I say, approving this kind of usage under the circumstances. Because who knows, it may go on for another 60 years, and there will be no fatal consequences at all, but... consequences at all, but it, it's, it's just, it's bad form and bad practice, I would say. Uh, to extend it into a commercial, uh, type, a commercial type of activity. Not exactly the same as a motel or something, but anyway. So I, I have great trepidations about approving this as a vacation home rental use. I mean, that just, uh, seems odd to me. But I, I do realize that we probably are somewhat limited in what we can do.
Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kathy.
So regarding, uh, following from Jim's comments, but regarding how the, the flow of, of traffic or the, of parking goes on that. Do I understand it correctly that cars will pull in? And then they will go to the north and then they'll pull out. So nobody backs out onto that road. They will actually drive, I mean, forward onto the road. So there's no backing in and backing.
Correct. Correct. Yes. Parallel to the road is how it will be.
Right. Yes. And then so that they will drive out onto, they'll access the road. They'll get onto Norris Peak Road going forward, not backing.
That's the idea. Yes.
Okay.
If I may, um, our engineers visited this site and, and there is no evidence of pull through parking whatsoever. Um, I, I don't believe it's possible. I, I haven't been to this site for numerous, numerous months. Um, but to my recollection, the majority of people pull in to the, the, the right of the structure as you're looking at the picture. And perpendicular, and they do back right out onto Norris Peak Road. There, there's no evidence of any sort of pull through parking being available. Um, and I believe Sean, our engineer, did point out that in the vacation home rental, um, I don't, I don't know, advertisement or whatever, but there is no mention of, of no trailers, um, being attached. And, and everybody, I guess, knows with our, our UTV, uh, paradise here in the Black Hills, uh, there's, you know, even if you have two people, you bring a trailer to this particular vacation home rental, it's going to be a problem. The structure is there as, as Jim indicated, but, uh, uh, I, I guess I wouldn't be, you know, in good conscience if I didn't advocate against having this as a vacation home rental.
Thank you for your comments. Any further questions for staff before we go to the audience?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, we have any recorded accidents in the area? Either to any of the vehicles, trailers in the parking area, or to the, um, building itself, the structure?
I, I don't know that. Uh, off the top of my head, we can gather that information, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? Okay. So we have a speaker from the audience. Please come up, state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with this land surveying, and I am here on behalf of the applicant Jessica Hessler. If you cannot hear me, let me know and I'll take this off, but if we can make do with the mask, we'll, we'll continue with that. Um, I'll address the parking first. I think in your packet, there should be a site plan.
Maybe just speak up slightly. Uh, you don't, you don't take your mask off, but just speak up a little bit louder.
Hopefully this will be better.
Okay.
Hopefully be short here. Um, there should be a site plan in your packet that demonstrates how people are parking on this or how they're directed to park. Which is not facing or not perpendicular to the, um, roadway, but perpendicular to the entry of the house. So that's the way people are advised to park. And in most instances, hopefully people will comply with that. And we do understand the concerns, um, that are expressed about safety, and that's an issue that we, you know, all should be aware of. As Stephanie indicated, this house has been there since nineteen sixty and used as a residence for roughly sixty years now. Um, as a vacation home rental, it will actually see less traffic than it would as a residence. In conversation with Jessica, she indicates that her rental occupancy tends to be in the thirty to forty percent range over the year. And that primarily takes place in May through September. So months that are outside of when we would see freeze thaw cycles typically and be during the summer months. And then be vacant most often during those off season winter months. If it's used as a residence, you have two people potentially that live there and drive their cars back and forth every day year round in all kinds of weather conditions. You also, if you noticed in the first slide, there's an apartment directly to the north of this that's used as a, as a rental. And those cars are clearly parking, um, backing out into the right of way. And while it maybe isn't ideal, these are uses that have existed for years and years and to deny somebody the ability to continue to use the property. And in this instance, I think we can actually improve the safety by having less people occupying that house rather than on a year round basis. So, um, understanding those concerns, but we would still request that you support the use of this as a vacation rental and allow her to bring this into compliance. Thank you.
Questions?
Just one.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Janelle. Just, and I don't know whether it's even possible. I haven't asked you yet. If they made a rule that did, uh, I, I read the rules that were included with the request, and I don't really see that it's totally definitive on what we're talking about here on the parking. I saw the one comment that was written in that we share the same rules. Well, what if we made that a condition? That it, there had to be some noted parking.
I, I believe that would be fine. When you fill out the application, I don't think it says that you have to go into detail about describing the parking. It just says that you need to demonstrate parking. And she was willing to add that as a condition in her posted rules, and so I think that would be fine. Maybe even a diagram a, as well that she could provide to renters in advance. That, you know, if she had a copy of our site plan, it shows how you're supposed to park there.
I agree. She seems to control the trailer aspect of it, uh, with her own handling of it as the contact person. But I was asking whether that she'd be adverse to going one step further in the parking. And secondly, you deal with a bunch of these. High Seegah has many areas identical to this location, uh, even worse.
Yeah.
So we're going to be down the road. I mean, we won't all be here, but some days one of those is going to come in with the same exact uh, difficulty, and actually I think a little higher speed limit in some areas on High Seegah.
Any further questions? Okay. Um, I, I share the same concerns, uh, that, that Jim had on this item. And when you look at the picture, the rocks there are not going to stop, uh, a vehicle coming through. And so unless the landowner wants to say that, that we're not going to rent it during those periods where a car could come through there. I mean, it's three point six feet from the right of way line, and the road is about maybe twice that. So, I mean, this is ten feet off the, the edge of the road. And, uh, I, in my mind, if there was, if there was some sort of barrier there that the, that the owner provides as a, you know, some sort of crash attenuation or something like that for, for vehicles. Basically to protect the people that are in the structure because they won't see, they won't see the accident coming. They'll be inside. So I, I share Jim's, um, comments on this, on this item for those reasons. Um, and I think that I could support it if they would come back with, uh, a way to protect it, or at least the people inside. Or other mitigation that says that, you know, it wouldn't be there in, in, uh, the, the times where people may lose control to hit the house, but those are my general comments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
I could just make one other comment. Um. Uh, I'm sympathetic with Charlie's, uh, note on that there are other circumstances and situations that are similar, perhaps even worse. But I just don't see any utility or virtue in endorsing a bad situation because there are many other bad situations that we may have to at some time deal with. I think the fact that when you make change, the burden for use is heavier. In other words, this has been a rental property. It's been presumably lived in by, uh, uh, an occasion by somebody who actually owned the structure. Now we're going to have people who have only a passing relationship with this property. Tourists, renters, who have little or no understanding oftentimes of even the risk of, quite frankly, driving in hilly terrain. And I just think for us to endorse that kind of commercial expansion of this pro, of, of this property is, is just not a healthy approach. Now, uh, Rich, uh, alludes to a barrier, and I to some extent would think that might be a practical, but it would have to be a rather substantial thing. I think in my own mind's eye. I see a fifth wheeled trailer coming down there one day and the guy's brakes go out or something goes awry. And heaven forbid, uh, that thing is on the beginning of that, of that curve. And it's on a s, a down slope. I, I just have images of something like that horrific happening. And I realize the chances are probably quite limited. But I, I don't understand why we shouldn't take the route that is by far the safer one. Because we're not denying, uh, people from using the property as it's been used in the past. So I, I, I still feel a sense of opposition to, uh, the changed use of this, of this property.
Further questions?
Ms. Chairman, I'd just like to
Go ahead, Travis.
Make a comment about, you know, I think it's appropriate to definitely, uh, warn the, uh, renters of what they're getting into. The individual who set up the rental rules and regulations makes it clear in item number four. You're staying in the beautiful and highly flammable forest. Please take care with your ashes, flames, and sparks. You're already warning them that you're in a dangerous area that they may not be familiar with. I think putting out another warning to someone that, hey, you're parking on a curve that, um, you know, can be slick during the winter. And, um, I think it should say no trailers permitted rather than just kind of having a point of contact conversation. Uh, that way it's written in black and white, so there's, there's no question about it. Uh, and of course, I think perhaps within the, uh, regulations, there should be a statement that they must park according to the diagram and then adding a diagram in there. I would be more comfortable with that. I've been to places, you know, I've been up to High Seegah. I kind of know what you're talking about there, Jim. I've been up there and, and I'm not familiar with the area, but I've gone up there to do a couple of different things and then I'm extra cautious because I'm not familiar with the area. So I don't know. I just think that if you give appropriate warning, um, to me, if there's, since there's been no noted accidents in sixty years, I, you know, I don't see that as a, you know, of a possible accident being the reason why we should say no to this particular, um, uh, VHR. Those are just my inputs.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, Travis's comment reminded me that we don't know that there's not been any accidents. We know nothing about the property in terms of accidents. As I understand it, the highway department chairman said, um, yeah, we can check on that. I, I would be curious to know if there has ever been an accident in which the building has been struck or in any way. You know, an event like that has occurred. I mean, that would seem to be a fairly simple thing to, uh, determine. I might be more amenable to this if I, of course, the law of probability would suggest even if one hasn't happened, it might be more likely that one's coming. In any event. I, I think it could be constructive to find out what the record of, of, uh, accidents or, uh, might, might have been at that, at location over the last sixty years.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I just would like to make my views on this. You know, I, you know, certainly public safety is important, no question about it, and we need to be mindful of that. I'm, the, to me, the compelling part of this is that the, the risk of something happening, some bad accident, is actually going to be decreasing with this current use. And because the, the points were made that the occupancy will be, uh, just, you know, a few. I mean, not necessarily a few, but a much fewer number than if it was, uh, used as a, um, owner occupied or a rental occupied year round. The, there'd be, there's going to be very few, if any, occupancy in the wintertime, which typically these accidents happen not only because of the slipperiness of the road, but the fewer hours of daylight. Uh, in the summer, there's a lot more daylight. I, I, so I can support this. I'm certainly, I certainly think it would be a good idea to strengthen the, some of the requirements and the rules and to be helpful so that the, um, renters of this really, you know, got some help, some constructive help in, um, being safe and so on. Uh, but I don't really see a reason to, to deny this because one, the, the safety situation I, is increasing and that to me that's a decrease. The safety, the safety is increasing. The risk is decreasing. So to me, that's a compelling, um, view. So I, I can support it as, as is. But I certainly think it's advisable that the, that the, um, that the owner take a look at the rules and strengthen them where's, where, uh, where she can.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm with the same thing. I cannot see that we should be looking at more aggressively supporting, uh, the safety of temporary occupants versus a full time occupant, for instance. Joe know, out Marshall Gulch Road up in Hill City, there's a fellow that's got his front door so close to the road that's maintained by the county. That actually when the snow kicks out of the blade, we're talking that it comes to his front door. And if he wanted to, to use his property, let's say he's decided to move on and get another property. He certainly, we would aggressively, uh, protect the people that would temporarily rent it, but we're not protecting him coming out his front door when the snowball goes by. I think we get a little too far in what we want to do if we're looking at, uh, getting that, uh, diverse on our rules that we're trying to do this. I think we've got to protect them equally. If that area needs a guard rail, then it's something that the property owner, the county, uh, the, the representatives and officials should look at. Whether it's temporary or full time. Thank you.
Further questions? Janelle, do you have a response to some of those questions?
Sure. If I can make just one last comment, um, we would be happy to provide a diagram that she can display both in the rental, in the rental and distribute electronically that shows a diagram for the parking. Indicates that no trailers are allowed, and I believe she has provisions offsite for parking for other larger vehicles, so we would be happy to enhance that. And I just wanted to make a quick reminder that Stephanie indicated that the future land use plan that I believe was, you know, been in place indicates that this could be used commercially. So if you look ahead, another step to that, if somebody were to come in and say, I want to rezone this to a commercial use and make some kind of a touristy stop out of it that could be open year round and have multiple cars going in and out every day. That would be an even worse potential situation to, you know, look at, at the options that are available there. And if this has been a hazardous area, um, I can understand the concerns. I, and I understand the lower speed limit. The, when county highway had the opportunity to comment, and nobody indicated that there had been a series of accidents there. And there's always the ability for the county to establish guard rail in areas where they feel that the roads are unsafe in certain conditions. If it's the steepness of the grade or whatever. Um, that ability has always existed and will continue to exist for them to protect the public. Thank you.
And I just want to comment on that. It would be grandfathered as a use in commercial. It's not allowed.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
I'd be in favor of, of this, uh, uh, application if some kind of guard rail structure was put in. Uh, and I assume that the property owner is using this as a, uh, vacation home rental because it is a more profitable usage than simply renting it out to somebody or living in it yourself. I mean, they're making a choice here that's driven by, you know, an economic concern. So I think that they ought to be obligated to, uh, put up some kind of, uh, guard rail structure that would deter, uh, the possibility of someone sliding into this building. I mean, and I, and that's what I'm fearful of. And I, and I'm not just fearful of it under circumstances which I started sliding towards, which was on a, uh, icy road or. Anyway, I, I mean, I think that's the only way I'd be in favor of this because otherwise it needs to be rented out on a regular basis, uh, if they can do that. to be rented out on a regular basis, if they can do that. But if they want to change the use of it, I think this is time to address the safety issue, which has always been there. It's always been there, even when they had regular renters, and like you say, there was much more usage. But the risk has always been there. But if we're going to make a change to the property usage, which we are here, and hopefully it's a more profitable use of the property, which I'm wholly and completely in favor of, but then it requires, in my judgment, it requires a small additional investment to deter some kind of catastrophic circumstance in the future.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead, Charlie.
I agree with what you're saying, Jim, but I don't think you're thinking it out as far as you need to. A guardrail properly placed on that property is going to have to be on the road right away, not on the private owner's property to be useful and to be correct. Even if you should try to move that guardrail onto the private property, in, excuse me, in this case, you'd probably have quite an exciting time with your insurance company, because they're going to make you build it probably beyond the specs of the county or the city, because now it's sitting closer to the structure than the highway right away. It's just, we'd be hamstringing the property owner to something I doubt whether they could perform. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead.
I'd also like to make a comment, too. If this is such a dangerous area, as the County Highway Department has pointed out, if it's already being recognized as a dangerous area prior to a VHR being there, why was it considered to have a guardrail put in by the county before? It's just, I'm just wondering, is it now that extra dangerous because it's going to be a VHR? Or was it not that dangerous because a person owned it and lived in it, but now that there might be multiple people that could be there throughout the year, and now it's become an extra danger? So, yeah, I kind of have to agree with you, Jim. I still think, yeah, there's a concern, but I don't think it's enough to make me not support this particular venture.
Any further questions, comments? Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 20-25 with 15 conditions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like to alter item number seven, just so that it's in the motion, and so that it's in black and white. And I don't know if the best way to word it, and Brittany, I don't know who's the best to ask, but maybe there's a better way to put it in there, but I really just want to make sure that it's, no trailers are permitted, and that the individuals must park according to the parking plan. And so I don't know if it's better to add it at the end of number seven, which is dealing with parking, or if it's to put it as another item number.
I would put it as another item number.
Another item number. Okay. Well, then, as a new item, I'd just like to make sure that the rental rules and regulations adequately state that no trailers are permitted in the parking area, and that individuals must park according to the, I'm going to call it a parking plan, or is there a better term for that right now?
Parking diagram, parking.
Parking diagram, that will be sent out with their package or whatnot.
Yeah, specifically, it says site plan 22869 Norris Peak Road. And that would be item 16, correct?
It would be item 16.
Everyone clear on the motion?
Yeah.
Motion and second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich?
No.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
No.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Four to two.
Four to two. Brings us to item 14.
Good morning, Commissioners, again. Brittany Molliter. Item 14 is conditional use permit CU 20-26, to allow a proposed shop building with living quarters to be used as a guest house in a limited agriculture district. As the property sits today, it is a limited agriculture district. It is 12.97 acres. The special flood hazard area designation is Zone D. There's possible but undetermined flood hazards. It appears there's an area to the north that has a dam. The lot contains a single-family residence built in 2012, an onsite wastewater treatment system, 54 by 92-story detached garage, or detached shop building, which is under construction right now with a building permit, a 10 by 10 shed. There are two access points. One is off a golf, both are off a golf course road slash Newtown Dam Road via existing approaches. One of them is along the section line highway, and the other one was approved recently by the County Board of Commissioners to allow to access the golf course road. This was routed around through the indoor department review. There was only one comment that came back from 911, just about the addresses being posted, and making sure that they have the assigned house numbers, both at the point where the driveway intersects golf course road, and on the structure where it is visible from golf course road. For the purposes of the conditional use permits, there are seven criteria. The criteria is up on the screen. I will read the responses. Guest houses are used similarly to single-family residences, and should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, this conditional use permit should not change the residential use of the property, and that should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. There is a residential subdivision of five lots to the east and a city-owned golf course to the south. The property to the west is owned by the City of Wall and currently undeveloped. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. The future land use of the subject property is rural residential. Rural residential allows for larger lot residential development in natural agricultural open space areas. Criteria four, the subject property is served by a private onsite wastewater treatment system and a rural water system, which is a community system. Access to the property will be provided via approaches off of golf course road. This portion of golf course road is transitioned to a gravel road with a 20-foot wide driving surface and named Newtown Dam Road. The north portion of the property has a natural drainage area that runs south to the golf course road right of way. Criteria five, access to the property will be provided via the approach off golf course road. Guest houses are used similarly, again, used similarly to single-family residences, and generate significant amounts of traffic to the property. Criteria six, the current zoning is limited agriculture district. Guest houses are allowed in the district with a conditional use permit. Limited agriculture district allows for limited agricultural and low-density residential uses. And finally, criteria seven, the future land use of the property is rural residential, and rural residential does allow for larger lot residential development. Staff did go visit the site. The shop building is under construction. The proposed guest house will be within the detached shop building. If this conditional use permit is approved, the applicant must submit a building permit for the finished space within the detached structure. So staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit with conditions. However, I would like to amend condition 13, because they do have both of those approaches approved by County Highway and County Board, so that condition is no longer needed.
14, right?
Yes, 13 and 14. Sorry. Because the existing approach is used or abandoned, if the new approach is to be used, they're going to use both of them. One is going to be for the house, and one is going to be for the guest house.
So what specifically, are there changes that need to be made?
So number 13 wouldn't need to be used, because they're going to use the existing approach that they have for the house, and then the new approach will be used for the guest house, and then number 14 is no longer needed, as it was approved by County Highway.
So 14 items.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for staff on this item?
Brittany? Just a general question. We don't have building codes in the county, but when we see a building like this, do we have, in our review process, somewhere to add the additional materials that normally you would see for a fire break when you have a warehouse structure or some other structure attached to a living quarters?
At this time, we do not have building codes. We do have some basic requirements for structures under 506 in our building permits. However, under state statute, single-family residences are exempt, and this would be considered that.
So, in other words, it's a single-family residence with a big garage?
Correct.
And we don't, and because under the state codes, we don't require the additional sheet rock or the two-hour wall between the...
It's recommended, but not required.
Understood. Thank you.
Further questions for staff on this item? Looks like we have a person from the audience that wishes to speak. Sir, please state your name for the record.
Yeah, hi. Tanner Hancock from Wall, property owner, building shop. We will have firewall there. It's not necessarily a second residence. It's a shop. It's an entertainment area mostly. We have people at our house a lot, and lots of kids, and...
Thank you, Cameron. I just think it's a safety factor, because a fire can be...
My contractor's already talked to me about it, so we will have the thicker sheet rock up for a firewall, so, thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Hancock? Hearing none, seeing none. Anybody else from the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 20-26 with 14 conditions. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, from the board and from the public. Roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries brings us to item 15.
Morning, again, Commissioners. Jason Thinnison, County Planner. Agenda item number 15 is conditional use permit 20-24 for West Solar LLC. The agent is Ross Verba. He is on Zoom, I believe. If you have any questions for him, the property owner is Hollis Arlen. The applicant's agent, Ross Verba, is requesting a conditional use permit for a utility-scale solar energy system in a general agriculture district. The project will be located approximately one and three-quarter miles south of the intersection of East Highway 44 and South Airport Road. The project will transmit solar energy from a project substation to the Point of Interconnect. The Point of Interconnect is a West River Electric-owned substation. The project will use typical photovoltaic panels and modular central inverters. This item was continued from the October 26, 2020 Planning Commission meeting in order for the applicant to submit documentation to address bonding for the decommissioning of the solar modules. Since then, the applicant's agent, Ross Verba, provided staff with a decommissioning plan estimate, which included $438,910 in decommissioning costs. A condition of approval requiring either a cash surety or bond in this amount has been added. And with that, I'd like to recommend an update to the verbiage of condition number 26 that I've included. I've been notified by the State's Attorney's Office that we do not take in letters of credit anymore, so I modified that to say that a cash surety or bond in the amount of $438,910 be submitted for the decommissioning of the solar modules.
Thank you. I'll start. I have a question, since I was the one that asked that this be continued at the last meeting. And Mr. Verba, are you on?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm looking at the estimate here, and it has labor materials, and that total is $1.468 million. And then there's a recycling credit that basically gets added to that. And can you explain that to me? Because I want to make sure that the county is covered for the actual cost of the decommissioning, regardless of you are able to get recycle costs for some of those materials, which the county would not be in the business of doing 20 years from now.
Right. So that is a cost of reselling all the equipment on the secondary market at the value that we project will still be there. That market exists today, but we had to make some assumptions as to what it's going to be like in the future. We believe that there is going to be a much greater need for recycled, reused solar panels, so the market's going to expand tremendously, because we're building a lot of solar in the US. So that is basically the deduction for the cost, to take it out. In my opinion, checking against the other permit for, I believe, Skull Spring Valley, which is the other project that you guys already... That project is four times larger than ours, and the total bond that they have claimed was 2 million. So our number and their number is very proportionate.
The equipment removal you estimate is going to cost $660,000, is that correct?
That is what my engineer calculated, correct.
The site demolition's $24,000, the site reclamation's $1.59507, and in project management contingency inflation, insurance, and fees would be $600,000. My point is this, all of those costs will be real costs to return that site to normal. And the county may or may not have the ability to recoup the recycling costs that you're proposing as far as the coverage amount. So it seems to me that the bonding amount should be more towards the 1.4, and I guess I can't speak to the other bonding that happened at the other site, but is what I'm saying making sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, absolutely. There is a value to that material that we obviously want to recoup. Overall, there is more value than there is liability, so that is our perspective. Now, just one item that was already mentioned last time as well. We have to maintain a million-dollar security for this same purpose to West River Basin Electric throughout the contract, which is 20 years, starting at the end of 2022. So there is additional security that is being imposed upon us by the utility as well.
If, my concern is the, I'll be the devil's advocate here. If 20 years from now, things are not okay, what will the cost be to bulldoze all of this stuff into a dumpster and clear the site? That's what the county would need to make sure, or has it become the landowner's responsibility? I want to make sure that the county's not racked with a liability 20 years from now.
Sure, I understand. The landowner in his lease has a provision that we obviously have to warrant, where we are liable to remove everything up to 36 inches below the surface. So, at the end of the day, if we fail with the landowner, it would be likely between us and the landowner, but we are obligated to do that to them, to the utility, and then obviously through this bond, whatever the amount is to you guys as well.
Okay. Are there any other further questions? Kathy?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with your line of thinking, because I do think it's important that we understand that this surety is sufficient, but, so the million dollars that you need to post with the utility, there's no, that's for a different purpose, isn't it? Isn't that for the purpose of assuming that you deliver and you can make good on your contract? It really doesn't have, it would not be accessible to the county for a decommissioning action, would it?
No, it would not be.
Okay. So I have one additional question for staff, and that is that on condition 26, the last sentence where it says, "If a letter of credit is submitted, it is reviewed on a yearly basis," what part of it is reviewed? Is it the amount that's reviewed, the $438,910? Or is it, I mean, I think it's important that we understand that that amount is reviewed on a reasonable basis.
So I mentioned earlier, I wanted to reword condition number 26 based on State's Attorney's guidance, so I would reword that to speak, to say that a cash surety or bond in the amount of $438,910 be submitted for the decommissioning of the solar modules, period. So we're taking out any verbiage that speaks to a letter of credit, because we can't take that.
Okay, so, I understand, okay, let's say the letter of credit is taken out, but how is that reviewed, then? If it's a surety or whatever it is, how is the amount, the $438,910, how is, what's the process, or what's the schedule, or what's the approach for reviewing that? So to Rich's thinking is that if the scenario really changes, and these old solar panels become worthless, you know, is that still the right amount? What's the process for review?
Right. So I would have to defer that question to State's Attorney's Office. I'm not sure if there is a review for a bond or...
My interpretation of what you said, Jason, is that the second sentence in that paragraph goes away as well.
That's correct.
Because the letter of credit isn't there, the letter of credit, I think, wouldn't be reviewed on a yearly basis, simply to ensure that they still have the credit, right?
Exactly, yeah.
In this instance, that the letter of credit is not going to be part of the issue, that only a cash surety or a bond... In this instance, that the letter of credit is not going to be part of the issue, that only a cash surety or a bond shall be provided, such that it won't need to be reviewed because it'll be the way that it is.
My recollection on the earlier application that was submitted that we approved, we did include a provision for review of the amount of that surety at some regular basis. Isn't that right?
Colin McNeese with the State's Attorney's Office. You are correct, Commissioner Johnson, in that the Wild Springs Solar had a condition that allowed a letter of credit and that it would be reviewed yearly. Here, we've determined that the bond is what our ordinance requires, and under the ordinance, which is three seventeen A fifteen F, they have to provide the financial assurance. The certificate of insurance shall be renewed and a copy submitted to the planning department each year the facility is in operation. So whether the condition is specifically in the CUP or not, they still have to comply with our ordinances.
But I mean, I guess that's, but that's still, that's just to ensure that it's continued, that the surety is still in force, in place, but what I'm getting at is that the estimate, cost of doing work changes all the time. Cost of doing construction changes all the time, year to year. The value of anything that, you know, the recyclable value or the resale value changes all the time with market conditions. My question is, how is this amount going to be evaluated through the years?
Commissioner Johnson, that's actually addressed in the same subsection of our ordinance. It's under D, decommissioning plan. The planning director has the authority to ask for that to be updated. So it's simply just a review of our ordinances, and that's something that they would have to comply with, like I said earlier, even if it's not in, because they have to be in compliance with our ordinances. Otherwise, they're obviously not in compliance, and then they can't operate their facility.
My understanding, though, is that these conditions, many of them, we don't really need them in there because they're part of an ordinance, but they're in there just to make it clear, make it, put a little, shine a light on it, and so on. So I'm not sure, but that's, I understand what you're saying, is that it's in the ordinance, so therefore we don't need to say it. But I'm not really sure that that's the practice that's been followed.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson, it's pretty common in legislative bodies to do a belt and suspender method, but as we all know, a belt and suspender isn't necessary to keep your pants up.
Right, well, I understand.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I guess my concern is kind of like Rich's concern in this aspect of, you know, we know it's going to cost one point four million dollars to do site reclamation cleanup if we had to go there and do it. So the question is, why did we reduce it down to four thirty-eight nine ten for the liability of the county? For that bond. You get what I'm saying? Why do we say we're willing to go down from one point four million to four hundred and thirty-nine thousand? Because if we have to go in and do it, it's not going to cost us that one point four million.
Right, and I would defer to the applicant to answer that question because this is his estimate that he provided to us, and I told him that I would present it to you.
Okay, am I?
I think I would support that.
Yeah, you're with me.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was with you, but yeah, because if the county does come in and we have to bulldozer it and fix it, then it's going to cost us one point four million, at least according to your estimates. Why do you think it's appropriate to reduce it down to four thirty-eight? Because if the county comes in there, we may not get that eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar credit for equipment removal.
Can I weigh in here so the gentleman doesn't have to answer twice?
Go ahead.
I'm in agreement with what you're saying. First off, I want to make sure that then, as it's stated right now, we're talking about an amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. That's what we're being asked to look at here.
Correct.
I'm in agreement with both of you. For starters, when you get to this point, five years, ten years, twenty years, who cares where it's at? It's probably going to be bid out by the county to remove this because at that point in time, either we're going to have a property owner and an owner that's insolvent or unprepared to do this reclamation work, and so it's going to have to be bid out. In my past, and I'm getting pretty old, but these new electronic devices, five years down the road, they're not worth ten cents on the dollar, let alone some refund that's of greater value. Unless it goes to goodwill, I guess, and they get the precious metals back out of it or something. But I'm, my biggest concern here is I don't think that we can review that four hundred and some. I think you've got to decide how much would it really cost to bulldozer this thing. How big an area? What's a contractor, a salvage contractor, going to look at? We're probably not going to give him time to salvage and sell these items and see what he gets back and whether we share in it or don't share in it. So I just don't think this is the way to go. In other words, I don't think we've got what we need right here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jim.
Kind of maybe extending on Charlie's comments. I'm wondering, the applicant is the one who made the estimates for all of these things, the materials, the net recycling cost. It seems like maybe the county should have some input to this, unless I'm misunderstanding, but I think it would be constructive to know that there was some even-handed estimate made, not simply an estimate that was one for the best circumstances of the applicant, which I understand is motive, but if you understand my point, I think we need to have someone who's sort of even-handed and a disinterested party make these, contribute to these estimates.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Charlie.
I'd move that we continue this again to get more specific on the actual reclamation costs involved with this project. At this point in time, we're not going to be able to do anything but look over our thumbs as far as the future.
I would offer a substitute.
Can I speak to this, please?
Go ahead.
Before you guys make that motion. So I am an applicant, so I have been, guys, and thank you for your time at this for two months. I have been instructed specifically by your county to provide an estimate which will be used for approval of this. I have done one hundred percent what I have been asked for. And now I am being pushed in a different direction where you want independent engineering firm to provide you that estimate, and I am completely in support of that. But I feel it's absolutely unfair to me that I have done what I was supposed to do, and now I'm being pushed another month where I'm soliciting funding for this project by no fault of my own. That is not something I could have known, be prepared for, or provide you. I would have if I had the opportunity. I feel this is not fair. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jim.
I appreciate his circumstance, but his interests are a little bit.
Just a point of order, just a point of order. We can't discuss until we have a second.
Charlie is correct. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Just a moment. I didn't hear who made the motion.
Charlie made the motion.
To approve or?
I suggested we continue this. I did not put a date in my motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to continue. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jim.
I just want to make the comment that I understand the applicant's concern. He's representing his interest. We represent the interest of the county and the people of Pennington County. So at times, they might be at some variance. We both want to achieve the same thing. I think this would be a constructive and beneficial project for Western South Dakota, for sure. But I don't think we can simply say, well, we make it easier for this gentleman because he's invested some time and energy. I think we still have an obligation to provide some more independent approach to this so that we know that this is close to what it might be, and I know it will be imperfect. All of these things are imperfect, but I think we need to investigate this a little further. Thank you.
And I agree with you. I apologize. I feel that our goal and your goal is aligned. There is no doubt about that. There has to be some kind of bond. There has to be some kind of instrument that everyone's happy with. I don't have any problem with it. But I would have rather asked that you guys put in some language where a condition number, whatever number is, that both us and you guys will submit that wisdom to someone that is an engineer knowledgeable in this, and whatever the amount they come up with, we will be subject to that.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
That's fair to me.
Go ahead, Travis.
I guess what I would say is that whenever we were asking for that, I just assumed we would get that first column, the labor materials, and that was what we would make our decision off of, not based off of all the proposed potential recycling and things of that nature. So I'm willing to move forward with it with the one point four six eight two twenty-six as the bond surety amount, if that makes it easier. Unless we want it to, if he wants it to be in that four thirty-eight range, I think that's where I'm in line with continuing this to get a different evaluation.
I'm on board with Travis. I would be in favor of this with two items. One, we move forward with the one point four six eight, and two, we put a belt and suspenders clause in there that says that it's reviewed on a yearly basis to ensure that the bond amount remains adequate for the site. That's where I'm going to land on this.
Just one point to make here is that a conditional use permits for these utility scale solar energy systems are reviewed on an annual basis. So at that time, that can be reviewed as well.
Okay. Sandy?
Yeah, my concern is what the applicant indicated. He followed the exact instructions given to him by the Planning Commission or the, you know, the staff at the planning department. And change the rules after the fact doesn't seem fair to me. I mean, he did what he was supposed to do, and now we're saying, you know, there's more that needs to be done, but we didn't tell you previously. Sorry, I'm losing my voice.
Mr. Chairman?
No problem. Kathy?
You know, I guess I just, I actually am aligned with what you were saying, Rich and Travis, that the higher amount without assuming the deduction for the recycle is, I think, a better estimate of where to start with, because I've, I've never, I'm not, I've had no experience with decommissioning of solar facilities, but I have been in the business of restoration and decommissioning of a lot of other types of facilities. The bonds are never enough. One, because costs change through time, and it's very difficult to go back and collect money from operating entities. And so in the end of the day, they're never enough. And so I just think, one, that we should start with the higher number, and we only are going to spend what it costs us. And so if there's extra money at the end, then of course that goes back to the owner. But two, I just think that this is such an important issue that, and I understand your point on the belts and suspenders, but if that's the case, most of these conditions would go away because they're in ordinance somewhere. And so I think something is, that of this importance should be spelled out, that this, and review is one thing, but reviewing the amount so that we have some confidence that it's adequate, that's the important part of this. So it's more than just the standard review. It has to somehow say that the amount will be reviewed.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Charlie.
I'll try to speed the process too. As long as my second was interested in doing the same, I would draw my motion to have it continued. Jim was the second.
Are you the, you were the second on that, Jim? Are you agreeable?
Yeah, I was. Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Go ahead, Colin.
If I could just say one more thing before I, then I'll yield. I'm sorry. May I?
Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to address the issue that the applicant brought up, that, you know, he has followed the rules and so on, and now we're moving the goalposts, so to speak. And I appreciate his position on this. I really do. But I think that the Planning Commission, the appointed members up here, we are independent from the staff, and that's really our function, is to be independent from the staff. So I'm sorry that from the applicant's perspective, you know, it appears that the instructions weren't sufficient, but that is how the process in Pennington County, as I understand it, works in the Planning Commission.
No, thank you. Go ahead, Colin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also just wanted to discuss Mr. Verba's position. My understanding of what the decommission plan he submitted that tracks the ordinance three seventeen A fifteen D, he did everything perfectly. There's nothing in that language that says that this commission or staff will have an independent engineering firm review. Perhaps that's something that this board could do. I'm unsure without looking at it further, but Mr. Verba and his company have done everything to the T. And as I think Commissioner Johnson pointed out, the difference seems to be the assumption in the value of the reclaimed process. But I just wanted to point out that Mr. Verba has complied with and done everything right as far as subsection D. Thank you.
Quick question on that, though. Subsection D doesn't allow for an assumption of value twenty years from now. I.e. a credit of a million, million thirty.
Mr. Chair, I think that's in how the applicant would interpret the language. Whether you would credit anything towards that cost or not, I don't think that's explicitly pointed out in our ordinance's language.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you reword what you, your suggestion, so that we could form it into a motion?
Well, I don't know if everyone agrees with me or not, but my comment, my comment to the board was that I'm okay moving this forward. I sympathize with Mr. Verba's following our process only to have maybe the request continue to change. I'm good moving the labor and materials amount of one point four six eight million for the bond as a requirement forward, along with a yearly review of that amount to ensure that the costs associated with the decommissioning of the site remain that amount, either more or less, and it can get adjusted based on the recommendations that come forth on a yearly basis. But my big thing here is I'm in favor of the project. I want to make sure the county is protected from a financial liability twenty years from now. That's my simple reasoning behind everything. Agreed.
I would move then, round it out to, I'm moving that we make it and round it out to just one point five. Let's quit all the decimal marks. Everything, make it one point five and leave it there, or make it one point four, one or the other. But a dollar amount that's rounded and go with the chairman's recommendation there.
Is that a motion?
Yes. Oh, yeah. I'll just make it one point.
You can't say one point four, one point five.
One point four. We'll be, do it in the favor of the applicant.
Okay, so just, I was going to clarify that, Kathy. Just to be clear, the motion is to change item twenty-six, and twenty-six would read a cash surety bond in the amount of one point four million dollars be submitted for the decommissioning of the solar modules and be reviewed on a yearly basis to confirm applicable amount or something thereabouts.
I understood that.
Is that correct?
Council didn't want us to include the yearly basis. I thought that was included in our ordinance already, that it was a given that it would be reviewed.
Okay. I don't want to change your motion for you. So your motion is then on item twenty-six is that a cash surety bond in the amount of one point four million dollars be submitted for the decommissioning of the solar modules?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I would say.
Second.
I think Travis beat you, Jim. Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Verba, do you have any last comments on that?
No, thank you. I'm in support of the suggested approach moving forward. I would, obviously, I'm assuming that this bond amount or surety, whatever the form of financial instrument is required, is in place upon us starting construction, not in place of issuing this, but when we actually start doing some physical work.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Verba, that is correct. And then I would also like to address, it's fine if you guys, if the commission wants, apologize, if the commission wants to do the belt and suspenders approach, or if you don't, it's up to you as a commission.
Thank you. Further discussion on the item? Hearing none, seeing none? Where the commission's going to vote? Last time for comment? Roll call vote?
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item 16.
All right. Item 16 is a request from staff. This came about due to some of the discussions on some of the development that came off of Old Hill City Road. Just with the increased development of land within Pennington County and ongoing concerns from the Board of Commissioners, the planning commissioners and staff regarding roads and their adequacy to serve these developments, staff is requesting an advisory committee be organized to address the issue. The advisory committee will review current road infrastructure, determine areas that need improvement to better serve future development. The goals of the committee are to collectively contribute to the improvement of infrastructure operations, maintenance and policies relating to roads in Pennington County and to make recommendations to the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners. Staff's recommendation is that the advisory, excuse me, the advisory committee consists of representatives from the planning commission, Board of Commissioners, Highway Department and Planning Department. Once visions and goals of the committee get established, starting incorporating maybe some citizen at large members.
Thank you. I have a ton of questions, but I'm going to open up to the board here first. Questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I mean, I guess fundamentally, I'm, I was a little surprised that this is before us to approve or create, whatever the word is and the.
Well, it's actually a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to form the advisory committee. A lot of times when items like this, you know, staff brings it to the planning commission, we discuss it to see how it would be better fit and it's recommendation to the board to form this advisory committee.
So, in other words, the agenda says discussion and possible motion to form a committee, but it's really to recommend.
To the board that.
To recommend the formation, okay.
Right, to address the concerns that have come up.
Okay, I understand, all right. So then my other question really is, what's the, how, what's the vision for how long this such a group would go on? Is it something that would set up and kind of go on for, for kind of forever, or is it, is it got a term, or how, what's the vision here for that?
Sure. You know, and I just spoke with Joe a little bit about it and I know that like right now there's just a big uptick in development and looking at some of these roads and some of the concerns, I think it should be something visionary, you know, that a five to 10 year plan looking forward. And then if development is significantly moving in a different direction, it may need to be something that's revisited. You know, it's hard to say, you know, like you mentioned before, markets, all of those things change, areas of development, you know, change quite a bit. So, I think it's something that could be, you know, moving depending upon what we see. I know that there is a transportation plan and some other things, but you know, we are seeing some areas of the county that have subpar roads, roads that don't have ingress, egress, that where people would like to develop, it's just becoming difficult. There's been more concerns, you know, by these, by the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners and just a way to maybe address and get some kind of vision moving forward and to give, you know, our county highway department, our department and the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners some kind of foresight of any kind of maybe funding, tax increment financing, you know, just some different things to look, you know, forward to, so we have some kind of guide moving forward.
I have a few questions. Go ahead Charlie.
Yeah, I understood that you'd like us to get out of your way and then you can ask your question. I think it's an excellent idea. The state level, I don't know whether they still have it, used to have a separate citizens' advisory committee to the state highway department and it was a very, very active years ago. I know there was a lot of citizen input into that and it was, it was one that they took citizens from different areas and put it on. I believe in our own area here, it's something that's needed and this is a way, when you are addressing a problem that involves the citizenry, why not have them have an avenue for input on it in an advisory position before you get it going? Yes, it's going to go on. Yes, it's going to look like we're making government bigger, but we're not going to pay them, I assume. And it's not going to get to a paid position where it looks so rosy that you'd want to get on it. So, I think it's really something, a lot of our past ordinance improvements would be a way to do it, were volatile issues with the citizens until a lot of input got put in. When you get close to that 50/50 deciding for and against, then you have those problems come up and they stay volatile. I think this is a way to look to the future where it's already on there and somewhere for people to voice their concerns. Thank you.
What's the current process?
We don't have one.
Okay. So, in previous careers, I'm somewhat familiar with the city of Rapid City's road process. Once a year, there's a bunch of folks that go out from the city and they review, view all the roads and drive all the roads in the city and they come up with, you know, here's the things we've identified in the past five to 10 years, here's the items we can add to the list this year, and then that list gets reprioritized by a certain number of people based on cost analysis and cost benefit ratios, those types of things. I'm somewhat familiar with the statewide transportation improvement program with the Department of Transportation and how that process worked when I was employed there was that similarly, there would be a group of folks that would go around and then recommendations get made and projects basically enter into this grouping of projects and then some of those make it into the five-year plan. And my question is, there, so nothing like that exists now for the county?
Not through our department. There may be through Joe's. The only thing that we have is our subdivision regulations and I would say nine times out of 10, any of those road improvements are waived. So, we do have standard criteria, but when the developer comes in and you may have an area, and I'm just going to use Old Hill City Road for instance, because that was the most current one that's been in front of you, you know, the developer is using a small portion of that road. So, if there's improvements or additional right of way, even if you would go through our, you know, subdivision rigs, he may have to establish more right of way, even if he improved that small portion, you're really not addressing the whole issue that's at hand. And I think that's some of the concern. We know the areas or we are anticipating some of the areas just based on our future land use and, you know, where we're seeing development, where we're seeing the desire for development, that there's some areas that could be, you know, addressed.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning, Joe Miller again. I think it's still morning, almost, or still. Yeah, we put together a five-year plan and it's kind of a revolving five-year plan. Mother nature kind of dictates what we do on a yearly basis. You know, this year, we, we were doing four bridges on Nemo Road, we ended up doing six. So, that's just a small example. Another example I'll bring up is Longview Road. We worked with the developer and Brittany was a part of that process. You know, it was, went from one developer to another and Longview Road was improved to three lanes up to the Murphy Ranch subdivision there. That's just one example of the growth that we're seeing and Old Hill City Road, there's, I don't remember how many lots there are on that one. Murphy and Shore is another one that comes to mind. There's several stuff and the highway department just doesn't have the funding to, you know, to build all these roads to meet those ADTs that are going to come, right? So, we've got to be able to work with, I guess, the developers and that to figure out where we need to grow. But to answer your question, we do drive the roads every year. Our engineering department does and puts a rating, they do a PCI, pavement condition index on all of those roads and we figure out, okay, which roads need to do an overlay. That's more maintenance stuff there, not so much development and increasing the traffic.
So, you have a five, you basically have a, do you have a five-year plan then?
Yes, it's actually on the, I don't know if Joan can put it up on the screen there, but it's, it's actually right behind you there.
And does that go through and get, does that go through and get published to the website and do you receive public comment on it? Is there, is there a feedback going to Charlie's, some of Charlie's points from the public into that plan?
So, this year was the, actually, the first year that this was voted on. It's a requirement for big funding, so the projects to get funding for, from the state for our bridge projects, they require that you have a five-year plan and it be heard at a public meeting and then approved by the county commission, which it was back in, I believe in September.
Okay.
But this was the first year for that. We also had another, it's, it's actually kind of outdated, I think we pulled it down from the website, but it was a major road plan that the state, every year, they, they have some sort of match for an engineering company to come in and look at all your roads and say, okay, hey, these are the roads that you, we see that need to be improved. Here recently, the state did reach out, there was some federal money that they're, they're going to take a look at all of Pennington County roads as part of a safety plan and tell us, hey, these are some of the safety improvements that need to be done.
And those will roll into their statewide transportation improvement program?
I can't answer that.
Through local government?
I believe so, but I'm not sure on that.
Okay. I guess I'm, you guys know better than anyone because you drive the roads all the time and every day and those types of things, in my opinion, to be able to make these recommendations. And I guess maybe the part that I'm hearing is maybe lacking is the plan for, to address future growth areas. Is that what I'm trying to?
I believe so, yes. That's, when Brittany first approached me at this, you know, they know where the developers are wanting to develop, though we, we do get the, the plans through our, the routing, right? So, we have an idea, but there's no real, other than, you know, a lot of these developers come through and they go through the, the staff reports and stuff, they probably come through you, but how many of those developers over the years don't come through and actually develop that stuff? So, the, the opportunity to have a, some sort of committee with, you know, Brittany, myself and whoever else may be on that committee to collaborate and figure out, okay, hey, this is where we're seeing development, where do we need to put those funds?
I have a slightly different thought on that, but, any questions? Comments? Go ahead, Chair.
I think some of this also comes from an expansion. I'm sitting here trying to think how to say this. During Heine's Day, when he ran the department out there, certainly was a very central management approach to looking at things. And I think those days are gone. I, I don't think we're going to have people that stay in a spot that long and in that level of control, that they do have a finger on every little direction and where they're going and a feel for that without assistance from departments. Yourself, as maybe you were a department head under that to put in and say, we need to look at these future developments. And I believe this is a way to approach a new way to go on that sort of thing. Thank you.
And thanks for the comments Charlie. Yeah, we, I do try and get my finger on everything, but it's just in this day and age, it's, there's so many developments going on out there, it's hard to keep track of who's doing what and what's going on out there.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead Kathy.
Yeah, I just think that this is the, there's no reason not to do this, put this group together to me and to take a look at this. I just think that for a lot of variety of reasons, it's a smart move. But I guess my only thought here is that there, there should be some kind of a distinction between what the responsibility is of this advisory committee and, and your, and your typical planning that goes on there. And I'm not so, you know, familiar with, with everything that goes into, to your planning versus this, but I, I think it would be good to, for you two to kind of think that through and, and be careful so that this advisory committee doesn't, does something new and that is additive to the process, rather than just, you know, trying to do what you're doing. There's probably some overlap, I don't know, but you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I get what you're saying. You don't want, I believe, I guess, you're, you're not wanting an advisory board to come and step on our toes as far as what we see needs to be done. You know, I, I guess I see this advisory committee more as a recommending, hey, this is what we're seeing, not necessarily, hey, this is what you have to do, right?
Yeah.
It's more of a, this is what we see, this is our recommendation.
Right.
I, I guess that's, Brittany, is that kind of what you're seeing?
Yeah, to me, it's more, I shouldn't say like visionary, but kind of in that, you know, where they're seeing, you know, development. I know in other communities, you know, developers typically go where the infrastructure is going to be available and, and working on that collaboration. And right now, we really don't have that. So, I think this would be a way to kind of get that, you know, and, and, you know, and not put so much, you know, we have, for instance, you know, we bring up Bradsky Road, you know, that's another, you know, area where we don't have a second means of ingress. There is, you know, interest in development out there. So, those are some of the concerns that have come up of late.
Right.
You know, that, I, I believe that needs to be addressed at some point, some way, shape or form. How are we going to address that? How are we going to address those needs?
Yeah, I guess my only suggestion would be just to be kind of very thoughtful and mindful about how you articulate the, the assignment of the advisory committee. But I think, I think you'd have it in your mind well organized, but just be kind of mindful of, you know, how you, how it's articulated.
I agree, man. Not a management tool, a long-range tool. And number two, you picked a perfect example. Bradsky Road has been on the front center page of the planning department in regards to these sort of problems for 20 years, let alone the bridge out there that was never supposed to be there in the first place, let alone all the, the CUPs and building things that were done, half of this because from one side of the road applied Bradsky Road and the other didn't. And that's a perfect example of where some planning and a long-range tool would have done some, some good. Thank you.
The city has a future major roads plan and I would call it diagrammatic at best. There, there are specific locations where you understand the road, but it's zoomed out to such a scale that you, you, when you're reviewing it, there's, the, the location could change, right? But the idea that it has to be there, so future developers understand that, hey, this is really what we see as the plan moving forward. Nothing like that exists in the county? Is that correct?
We have a transportation plan, but it hasn't been updated, I don't think, in quite some time. And, you know, I, I'm not sure what tools. I think there was a consultant that came in and, and did it. I'd have to look at the year. I know I've seen it, but it's quite old. And I think that, you know, some of the development practices and the, and the desires of the public has changed over time and I think most of it is based on the market, the costs, things like that. So, things are moving in a different direction than maybe that they had before.
And if I may.
Go ahead.
That transportation plan that she is talking about is, is what I was talking about. We, the state offers a match for an engineering firm or a consulting firm to come in and give you that transportation plan. It was eight years old last year, seven or eight years old, so we were on the bubble of, okay, is it any good anymore? Should we have them do it again? And we opted not to have them do it in 19 or 20 and in 21, we're looking at having them do it, do that update again and get a good, an updated transportation plan for the county.
Okay. So, I agree with what Kathy had to say, but I'm going to go to the backside of this, so be cautious about the task moving forward. What would you expect the output of this board to be? of this board to be? Is there a document that, that's going to be a future guide, similar to the, to the comp plan that got addressed? What is the output? What do you envision that to be?
Similar, similar to what the comp plan is, some visionary areas that we see where the development would be, and the necessary infrastructure, mostly roads, maybe additional right-of-way acquired, things like that, things that take a lot of time, things that need to be public, you know, just for developers and property owners. We don't have that right now. It's kind of one of those, I feel like it's a knee-jerk kind of reaction. It's like, I wanna develop here, and then, you know, it's, you know, we're trying to scramble around and figure it out. And I think, you know, our comprehensive plan and our subrags are out of date. You know, we have some, you know, areas that maybe we need, you know, more right-of-way secured and things like that through these planning processes, so we can, and we see future developments and additional traffic, that where we're gonna need to, you know, utilize that right-of-way and things, and then, and then those things will come into play, you know, just down the road even more with like when we look at variances and land uses and things like that, when we know those things are in place moving forward. We have, you know, Murphy Road, we have an agreement on a right-of-way and a setback variance, and now that road is maybe going to be developed, you know, moving forward, and that wasn't something that we would have anticipated. So, you know, there's some different things like that, that I think could prevent some current decisions, you know, and then moving forward that we know what to expect in the future. I mean, not everything's foolproof, but at least if we have a guide or something to fall back on, to make those decisions.
I see one other thing. Road districts, I would suggest are going to expand in the future. If you all look back a little bit, the poor auditor ended up inheriting the road district, what would I call it, assignment? My God. And then people became unhappy because each county was given a different way to put their own road district ideas together in the whole state. So one, Custer's Road District is totally different than Pennington County's Road District. What I was getting at is, that shouldn't happen. That should be the auspices of people that are interested in looking to the future, because that one even blew up to where Mark Kirkery went down and wrote a whole new ordinance that then the poor auditor had to implement on all the road districts that they were responsible for, because of unhappiness over that sort of thing, no planning. It switched. I'm just suggesting, I think that's, this vehicle is a perfect way to avoid that sort of thing.
Well, and currently, I don't believe that the county highway is taking on any more roads, and the roads that, you know, of late that are getting approved are not, most of them are not to county standards. So they're already, you know, in the instance that they would have to develop further, you're already kind of behind the ball.
That is correct.
So even when they wanted, if they wanted to come in and have the county highway or have the Board of Commissioners take on the road, it isn't even, there isn't enough right-of-way secured, it's not built to a standard. So those are some of the other things to look at. And in some areas, that's probably perfectly okay, but in other areas, you know, that's probably not.
So the, well, there's a lot of details into something like this, so I don't think we'll get through all of those today. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the, the item. I would proceed cautiously and know what the ultimate goal needs to be. I do recognize that when plaits come in that are adjacent to primary highways, arterial, minor arterial, all those type of roads, that you guys need a tool to say that even though you wanna do this now, and we may not make you rebuild this now, you at least need to donate the right-of-way now, so that when the, when the county comes through and does this work, you don't have to go back and buy it after the fact, right? Does that all make sense? It's the way the city operates, so.
And this isn't any decision, if this is something that the planning commission wants to think about, you know, before the recommendation goes in front of the board. This is mainly an item of discussion at this point. We just put that in there just in the instance that you would make the recommendation if you didn't.
Well, I'm certainly agreeable to making a motion to recommend the formation of such a committee. I mean, I can continue it, but I'm not sure there's a reason to.
I'd second that.
So, I think each of you guys used "I'd". So, are you?
Also, I would. I did, I did make a motion.
Oh, you did make a motion?
I will.
Okay, and then you said "I'd second that"? Okay, so, motion and second, correct? Thank you. Further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Mark, you wanna weigh in on this?
I'm good.
All right. Hearing none, seeing none?
Chairman?
Go ahead.
So, we're just, we're just kicking this upstairs for their consideration, is that what you're saying?
That is currently where it is at right now. My, my comments were along the lines of Kathy's, that I think that there needs, in my mind, I'd like to know what the output's gonna be. That way, the input can be very defined, and I guess I would challenge staff to find out what that is. What do you need? That's it.
I'd suggest...
That'll direct the committee.
Suggest the Board of Commissioners isn't going to nominate the committee at their meeting. They're gonna put together a committee to look into what we've got here that we're passing today, and they're gonna put the respective members on that thing to come back with some proposal on how to format it. And I'm hoping that's the way they go, and the commissioners, I know that's probably the direction they would head. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none? Roll call vote?
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item seventeen, the county board report.
Item seventeen is a county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty planning commission meeting.
No other points? Nothing?
No.
Okay. Items from the public, seeing that there are no, are no folks from the public currently in the room? Items from staff?
We just have the October building permit report. I believe that we are on track this year, consistent with last year. If you look at our total valuation, our average per permit went up. I think our number of permits looks low, just because we had in two thousand nineteen seventy-five permits for like small cabins, so I think that makes that. And then there was quite a few mobile home removals, so I think that that, there was forty-two of them today, so I think that kind of makes the numbers look like the five thirteen to the three ninety-nine, it makes them look maybe not as, as good as they probably are pretty consistent with last year. So, all things considering, I think that's good.
Questions on the report? Hearing none, seeing none? Any other items from staff?
No, that's it.
Items from the membership? I will likely be gone on November twenty-third. And Travis is a maybe?
I'm still a maybe. We'll see, we'll see how my recovery's going. If I have to, I'll just bring a yes and a no sign, and just sit here and...
Like yes or no?
Spin one?
Anything else? Hearing none, seeing none? Final item on the agenda is adjournment item twenty-one. Is there a motion?
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote?
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
And we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.